We will call to order the meeting of the November 20th, 2025. Meeting of the City of Highland Park Zoning Board of Appeals. Patrick, may I get an attendance roll call, please?
Member Arnoff.
Here.
Member Weisberg.
Here.
Member Chase. Member Trashansky.
Here.
Member Zaransky.
Here.
Vice Chair Yablon.
Here.
And Chair Be.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. First item up for business on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November 6th meeting. Never even get a chance to review those. And if so, I will entertain a motion.
Vice Chair Yablon makes a motion to adopt the minutes as drafted.
And could we get a second? Second, Members Zaransky. All right, all in favor of adopting the minutes as drafted, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, minutes are adopted as written. Item number three on our agenda, business from the public. Is there anybody here that has something that's not on the agenda that they want to bring to his attention? Doesn't appear as such, so we can move on. Item number four, old business. There is no old business. Item number five, new business. There is one item of new business, and we will get to it now. It is VAR 2025-00057. Property address 1331 Hillary Lane. Applant Brett Kaplan. And Patrick, do we have a presentation, please?
Yes. So, 1331 Hillary Lane. Applicant Brett Kaplan. Proposal is for a new addition. The property is located in the R6 zoning district, and according to Lake County Assessor, his home was built in 2000. The requested relief is to construct the allowable floor area, FAR for short, of 30.48% or 4,080 square feet for residents that already exceeds the permitted FAR to construct a 382 square foot addition for a proposed total FAR of 42.69% or 5,713.9 square feet. So here is the property located at the end of Hillary Lane, next to the Skokie River here. And just kind of an aerial shot of the property. The existing structure, this is a kind of a trapezoidal kind of shape lot, existing home with a deck in the rear of the property, and the proposed addition will be located here approximately where the deck is located. I couldn't get to the property for this one, so we'll have to live with a Google Street View. Not the best view for this property, but it is at the end of the block and can kind of see a little bit of the house there. So in blue is the existing home. Yellow here is the proposed screen porch. Oops, deck, or not porch, yeah, just a screen porch, geez. And then so the required FAR, this is going to be a lot of numbers. Please stop me if you ever get confused. So the required FAR is 4,080 square feet for the total footprint for the home. The existing home is 5,332 square feet, and the applicant is proposing a new total of 5,714 square feet for the new total. The addition will be a total size of 382 square feet. So on the left-hand side here, these are the existing conditions of the rear of the property, and on the right-hand side is the proposed screened-in porch. And again, on the top here are the existing conditions, and the bottom is what the new porch would look like on the back of the house. So for the neighborhood context, the FAR kind of totals on the end of the block, this comes from the Lake County Assessor's office. The average square foot totals for the homes at the end of this block here is 4,267, a little lower than what is currently at this property. The average FAR being 37.4. And then I also provided the median just for a different metric, a little lower, 4,152, and a median of 37.9. So neighborhood in total is a little less than what the applicant's property is. In 2006, this property received a variation to exceed the maximum floor area. They were approved for 4,751 square feet or 35.67. If you'll notice that they were approved for 4,751, however, today they are, current existing conditions is 5,332. I've asked the applicant to kind of review that, and their architect has confirmed that this 5,332 is correct, so this is kind of the information I have for you, but there is kind of a discrepancy from this 2006 variation and today. But again, the applicant is now proposing a new total of 5,714 square feet. I didn't receive any comments from either city staff or members from the public. So in review, the requested relief is to exceed the maximum floor area for a new addition that is a total size of 382 square feet for a proposed total FAR of 42.69% or 5,713.9 square feet. That's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hey, Patrick, you said there was a variance, that's exactly the screen I was looking for, where they were specifically approved for a maximum of 4,751 square feet, correct?
Correct. So it was to do this portion of the house. This is an addition that happened in 2006, and they needed a variation to the FAR for that portion of house.
Okay, but somehow they ended up with 5,332, which is, you know, significantly larger than 4,751. How would they have gotten away with that? Why would the building apartment, did they do things without permits, or?
So it's the same footprint. I'm not sure if there could have been a miscalculation in 2006. I'm not, I reviewed everything. There's not like an additional addition somewhere on the property that is between 2006 and now. I can have the applicant speak a little bit more on that as well, speaking with their architect. But yeah, I don't quite have an answer for you on that.
Was it different ownership in 2006 than it is today?
It was Kaplan's, I'm going to assume, just different generation of family.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Just please.
For the existing deck or porch does not go towards FAR, correct?
Correct. It's not until it's enclosed, so having one of those walls around it is what then triggers the FAR total.
Okay. And do we know the dimensions of the porch versus just the square footage?
Um, the applicant confirmed that, and I'll look at the plans. They're not on this screenshot right now.
Okay.
Are they planning, if you know, Patrick, or if not, will the owner, on doing any foundation work or just enclosing an addition or an existing footing, if you would?
So it'll be a little bit more new because it is in this area, and you'll see that it kind of zigzags this way, so there'll be a little bit new coverage in this area. There are no setback requests for this addition, but there will be a little bit new land coverage.
And a pergola would not be considered like enclosed, right? It has to have complete enclosure?
Correct. A pergola would not be considered for FAR.
Okay. So they are expanding off of the existing deck?
Yes. So this is what the existing conditions are, and then this is what the proposal will be.
Can you show me the existing again? Okay, so they're kind of squaring off, basically?
Yeah, so it's square off a little bit.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Okay, Brett?
Well, can you just scroll back like a couple? There was the variation slide and then a couple before that. But like it was like the average, the street, yeah. So would it be accurate that like the whole neighborhood is significantly over the minimum FAR? Because when did it all be 30%?
So it's dependent on your lot area, and these lots are not all the same exact size, but yeah, they should be roughly around the same lot area. So most of them, I guess, are, I guess I didn't check the...
You know, it just seems odd that they're all over.
Yeah.
Right, so far, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll say that their square footage is around 4,000, which was a little bit closer to what compliance is, but based off of the, when I calculated the FAR based on their lot areas, they're a little bit over.
What's the required or supposedly required FAR percentage?
It's all based on the lot area, so I guess I'd have to...
What's the percentage of FAR that you're allowed to do as a matter of right?
There is no one set number, so it's like if I have 10,000 square feet, it's a different percentage versus if I have 12,000 square feet.
Well, it's a different percentage changes?
It's all based on the lot area, so I can...
It's a tiered approach? Is it fair to say that the smaller the lot is, the larger the FAR is allowed, or is it the other way?
Uh...
Or is there any correlation? Or is it just random?
It's not random. There is a calculation. I don't know if, I don't have an answer on if it, how scaled it is. It is scaled in a certain way, but I don't have the...
There has to be certain criteria that determine what an FAR is. We don't know what those criteria are.
Yeah, it's a, so it's like your lot air, yeah. It's just a law of calculation.
Nothing's ever easy.
Seems like it should be, right?
Yeah. It says R6.
Generally, FAR is a set percentage for certain districts, so I'm not sure why this would vary depending on lot size. Sole point of FAR is to keep proportional to your lot.
Oh, it's really tiny. Are there any issues of bonus FAR?
I don't think it's, I think this already has a variance that's already exceeding that.
It's a little hard to read, but so these are the calculations for FAR. They each have, I didn't create this, so I don't know the, I'm also not a mathematician, so I don't know the floor saying of the, using point four, point two, like having the starting point, but it's kind of tiered based off of how big your lot size is, and then depending on if you're within there, you use this calculation in order to figure out your FAR totals.
Okay, so it's tiered based on lot size, so it's, it's consistent theoretically that if you have a bigger lot, you can build a larger structure with the, with approximately, but somehow they change the FAR depending on lot size. It's kind of, kind of complicated, okay.
Correct. Yeah, so I can't, there's no like, if it's in the R6, it's, you get 32%. It doesn't.
Okay, so does this...
It hovers around.
Wasn't it doing it the opposite? Because if you have a humongous lot, they don't want you to have a house the entire size of a lot. I think it's normalizing it.
It's generally, FAR is generally a fixed percentage, which then makes it proportional to your lot size. So it would be the lot size determining how much larger the structure. Apparently, it is the lot size, but it's based on a calculation that remains to be unnecessarily complicated or somewhat mysterious as to what the outcome is as a result or what the purpose is for it, so.
And like how much does it really move? It can't move 7%. It's like maybe 1% difference, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I have no clue as to why they would do it that way. So the, compared to the other houses in the neighborhood, I think this is at least what I'm trying to get to. Are the other houses over the FAR by a commensurate amount with what these people are asking? Or are the people asking for something that would make them the, exceed the FAR by the most, if you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, so, so they're asking for 42, almost 43%. Kind of the block is hovering around 37, so about 5%.
They're asking for 5% more FAR than the average FAR of the block.
Correct.
Regardless of lot size. Dependent on lot size, but regardless of lot size.
Correct.
What is their lot size? I can't find it.
Um, yeah.
Do we have a comparison of what the different lot sizes are in the area?
Nothing here, yeah. So there is a page in the packet. It's all over the place.
Well, I'm assuming that the lot size is what's, not on all of them, but on some of them at the, in the, in the individual lots that are indicated on that diagram, like the one at 1271 Hillary is 11,000 square foot lot, 1291 is a 9700 square foot lot, et cetera. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. So it's not completely consistent. This lot is slightly larger because of kind of the triangle shape at the end where these interior lots aren't getting that much space because of that. So these lots on the end are a little bit bigger than kind of the block. Come on.
A lot bigger. Page 17 of the packet shows that, you know, some of them are under 10,000 square feet, or this one's almost 19. Right? That's what you're asking?
Yeah.
So there's a wide range of lots.
And this house is already substantially bigger than the other houses in the lot? Okay.
Looks like they kind of lose a little bit of, you know, it's the trapezoid, there's a little bit of extra space that may be, I don't know.
All right, anybody have any other questions for staff at this point?
So even though the assessor listed as 4106, we think it's 5713?
So that's what the assessor's gross floor area has. I also referenced their sketching, and it's referenced around that, but again, I'll have the applicant talk what their architect has come up with for their numbers.
Thank you.
And we are allowed and bound to go off what the applicant's numbers are, as opposed to...
It's a license.
Presumably, the assessor took measurements at some point, or took off a survey or something?
I'm not quite clear on how the assessor gets their information, if it's just through sale and then if that information is as accurate as it can be, but yeah, I mean...
Is there a current survey that indicates at least the footprint, the size of the footprint of the house? It wouldn't tell the square footage because it wouldn't get the volume.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we accept the architect's materials. They're licensed by the state. They're kind of honor-bound to be accurate, and we accept that.
Interesting. Please.
And there's no issue with bonus FAR because this property already has had a variance?
They're over the, yeah, it's over the bonus.
Okay. Any other questions for Patrick right now? Okay, thank you, Patrick. Seeing no more questions at this point, we will ask if there's someone else here that would like to be heard on this matter? Okay, if you would be kind enough to approach the podium and state your name for the record, please?
Brett Kaplan.
Mr. Kaplan, do you affirm or attest that testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
So we currently are hoping to get a screen in porch. We have a existing deck that is deteriorating, and we have a balcony off of a room that is structurally unsound, so that needs to come down. It was off of our main bedroom, you know, up there. We've since converted, there was a sliding door, we've converted it to a window in anticipation and hope for this, so just the way, we've kind of always envisioned that that space become a screen in porch. It just fits the area really well. We are reducing the deck size a little bit on the side there, as you can see, to try to make up for some of the gained space, if you will. Yes, it was my, my parents who owned the house before. I was trying to ask them if they knew why the calculations were off. That's, I guess, I'm not architect or anything, was that from what I saw, the garage wasn't included in the 4,751 perhaps? I don't know. It just wasn't, some numbers that I saw on the, on the 2006 variance report. I tried to look into if the regulations changed on what constituted the FAR kind of calculation, but I couldn't find anything to that effect. So I don't think our proposed variation will kind of impair or material detriment to the neighborhood, if you will. No one on the street can see it, and we're actually backing up into a highway zone, no one really can see it, if you will. And so, yeah, if it pleases you all, I appreciate the time and the consideration, and hopefully can be approved.
Okay. You're aware that we have certain standards, eight in particular, that we must apply to every variation request, and in order for us to grant the variation request, we have to be of the opinion that all of the standards are met. I would appreciate if you could ask, address the standards, and specifically the first three or four, pretty, the meat of the matter, if you would, so.
Yeah, sure. So we don't intend to resell anytime soon or make money just from building the porch. It's really, I think there's definitely other areas, other houses on the street with similar structures such as this. I don't think it's undue hardship or unique in that regard. I think it is consistent with the, apologies, it's consistent with how the rest of the houses are looking to. We're not making any changes from a structural or visual perspective, and I don't think...
Allow me to maybe focus you in a little bit on what at least I would perceive being one of the obstacles that would prevent us from possibly granting this variance would be the number two. The hardship that, the standard number two is referring to would be the hardship upon you, upon the owners of the property, if we were not to grant the variance. So what specifically is, what hardship is creating the need for the variance?
Got it, okay. Because we're on a highway and a lot of forest area, we would like a place to sit outside, be enclosed away from the bugs, which is very buggy and fairly noisy, so we would like a place to enjoy with our family, to be outside in an enclosed space.
Is there anything unique about your lot that would require the only way to accomplish that to be, to give you more FAR and be able to consider that to be in compliance with the code?
I don't believe so.
Let me help you out here.
Okay.
Your packet, you have a whole section says, that's titled hardship if variance is denied. One of the things you say is the property's existing configuration and lot shape limit options for expansion without exceeding coverage limits. Would that be a hardship?
Yes, thank you.
And just real quickly, can you just explain why the lot shaped limits the options?
Yeah, just because of kind of the angling, if you will, and the slope down, this is really the only way we would kind of be able to have it in a closed space. It's pretty gradient, and this would be the best way to have an enclosed space outside. Thank you.
And...
By all means.
Could you tell us how large the, like the dimensions are going to be?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I want to say 11 by 22 square feet, if you will.
So it's skinny?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. But it's in the, it should be in all the drawings, yeah.
Is that right or not?
There it is. It's about 15 and a half feet by 22 feet, or 23 feet.
15 feet by 22 wide along the deck of the house?
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Kaplan? Seeing none, I guess, is there, I will ask if there's anybody else here that wants to be heard on this matter. Doesn't appear as such. Mr. Kaplan, I'll ask you one follow-up question. You, I know Patrick already mentioned this, but you've obviously provided notice to the neighbors. Have you gotten any feedback whatsoever from any of your neighbors as to being for or against?
They just are excited if it goes through to have them over for some cocktails or some meal.
If you're giving free cocktails, that'll win the neighbors over every time.
Yeah, you're all welcome.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Appreciate it. Okay, I will, at this point, poll the board, and I'm going to begin with Member Arnoff.
This is tough because I don't see that there's a current hardship there, but I think you did a nice job explaining... did a nice job explaining what he perceives to be the hardship with regard to the highway and the bugginess, I guess. So I would be on the fence because of that one, but I think I would vote to approve it.
Member Westbrook?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I think it makes a lot of sense to enclose it, but I, I mean, to me, it's a convenience, like, I don't know, I think of a better case as made, it's more convincing that we're not kind of hand-feeding. Yeah, I want to approve it, but using the standards, I just don't see how number two currently is able to be met, but I'm able to be, my mind's able to be changed if someone's got a good reason on the board.
There is no standard that says Westbrook always has to be a nice guy.
Right, so I mean, I want to do it, but yeah, number two's, I'm not seeing it.
Members are asking.
Yeah, I agree, I think it seems like a big ask because it's such a, you know, such an, exceeds the ratio by so much, but there may be a math problem there that we're just missing and it's just skewed. I mean, I guess I could get behind the hardship. You know, I'm sympathetic to like highway noise and, you know, you know, there is some slope issues and you're kind of backing up to a, sort of a little messy back over there and it's difficult, but it's also like you exceed the FAR today. But again, I sort of agree, I think it's a, makes sense, it's reasonable. I guess I would like to see how one of my elders can take over and see if they could convince us that this is a true hardship that meets these standards.
And my elders, I presume, you mean longer-serving members?
Elders, attorneys on the board.
Well, speaking of attorneys, Member Trishansky.
Lovely. So, right now, there's a, there's a deck that's structurally unsound that needs to come down, right? That's, right, Patrick?
According to the applicant, I don't know that information.
Okay.
Which could probably be rebuilt as a matter, or repaired as a matter of right.
Right.
That's correct.
I mean, I think that the hardships are, were more addressed in the packet as opposed to the presentation, and I can, I think I can get behind it. It does seem like a relatively big ask, as mentioned by Members Zeransky, but I also see that the packet did set forth alternatives that were considered, and one of them was the unscreened deck or patio, which is currently what is there, and the applicant described or stated why that really wouldn't be a feasible option. I think I would be for it, I would vote for it.
I have some question, maybe Patrick knows, is this like a wetland behind him? Like, what is that?
Uh, this is the Skokie River.
Yeah, but it's kind of like a ravine, but not really.
But it's not like a wetland with this like extra buggy or anything there?
Well, I mean, yeah, it's, this is the river, so I mean, there is just floodplain area.
Because a lot of the area floods, like, you know, that next street is like notorious for flooding, and all those houses flood, on Taylor Street. I don't know. Okay, well, if no one has information, I'm good.
Like I said, just speaking a little bit on that, so this property does have a lot of, so this is like detention easements and just other areas on the property that can't really be built on because of their proximity to the Skokie River. This would be reviewed by our engineering and building division to make sure that excess water would be mitigated from going to neighboring properties, but this is another condition of the property that just has detention easements on it, and its proximity to Skokie River.
Member Trishansky, are you finished?
Yeah, I said that I would ultimately for it.
Okay. Vice Chair Yama?
I believe the standards have been met. I think that the letter really does spell out a lot of the issues that makes this a distinct hardship for this piece of property, especially when you take into consideration the proximity to the water and floodplains, and I understand the need to have an outside area that's inside for this particular piece of property, and also one that's a little bit elevated, too, if it gets that, you know, mushy over there. So I believe the standards have been met and I would be in favor of this project. I do think the FAR is a little bit on the high side, but I don't think that the ask itself is unreasonable, so I would be willing to grant the variance.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm going to throw a little bit of a curveball here because I don't think that the standards have been met. I think we've got a house that appears, unless I'm mistaken, to be the largest house in the neighborhood already. It's already exceeding the FAR, including the bonus FAR, by a considerable amount, and I really can't get behind the idea of it being a hardship to not be allowed to expand upon something that is already well over the FAR. I think it's kind of, would be flying a little bit in the face of the zoning code to grant this thing and saying, oh, we've got a big house, and I'm repeating myself, but it's substantially over the FAR, and we're going to give them even more FAR. There's got to be other alternatives to give them either, you know, screened-in space or other space without, either by reconfiguring or taking, you know, whatever, it's not really my role to advise is how to, you know, avoid having to seek this variance, but I just, I can't, again, based strictly on the size and how much it already exceeds the existing FAR that's supposed to be there, I can't, I can't see justification for granting an even bigger structure, and I know that's something that historically the zoning board and the city council have always expressed, that we should be extra vigilant on FAR matters so we don't end up having too much house on too little lot. So I personally don't think, I think there might be a way to redo this and, you know, and come back, or maybe I'm missing some other factors that should be given more weight that haven't been presented to us, but as it stands right now, I don't think the standards are met and I couldn't support this. So having said that, you, your options at this point are, I could ask for a motion, you can get, I can also go back and, I know a couple people said they were on the fence and said they were waiting to hear what others said, so if you want me to kind of repoll before we take any, take the vote, I'll be happy to do that, and you're nodding, so I'm going to listen.
Is it like a unanimous decision?
No, no, it just has to be four, well, there's actually six of us, so it still would have to be four. There's usually seven, or there's supposed to be seven, but there, it has to be a majority of the existing quorum, quorum being six, majority of six, in this case would be four, four more, so if it's three people voting against, it would not pass. If it, if it doesn't pass, the matter's over and we've denied the variation. The other option is, and you can wait till I poll again if you want me to, is you could ask for a continuance and come back and try and present a more compelling case as to why, in fact, all the standards of, for granting a variance have in fact been met, to try to convince anyone who may have been preventing the variance. But those are, so those are the options. We pretty much routinely would grant anyone a continuance if they wanted it, so would you like me to get a straw poll kind of of the board at this point?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go back in the order in which we, if I can remember it, that we opined, that would be first, Member Arnold.
So actually after listening.
Yeah.
So actually after listening to you and taking into account that it is larger than, you know, it should be today, not should be, that per the FAR today and even a larger variance, I'm swayed a little bit against, against it. I do have a, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is the room, is it heated and cooled, or is it just like screens?
Just screens.
So there's no, there's no HVAC into it? Okay.
The applicant said that there was just screen, you said there was no HVAC unit?
Correct. I think we made up like one of those heat rack things.
Sorry, I just don't, didn't remember.
You're good, it's just a recording, so.
Okay.
Hard to hear from the audience.
Okay. But I'm, I'm like, on the fence, literally, on this one.
All right, Member Westbrook?
Yeah, I'm pretty much at the same exact spot. I mean, trying to think about it more, like, you know, you move into a house that's existing as is, you didn't change the house, correct? So you want to have a screen and porch, you should be able to, right? But again, I just see it as a mere convenience, because really, like, as I said before, you could do a pergola, you could kind of enclose it without enclosing it, you get the same effect, so, you know, I'd be a no unless, you know, there was kind of, I need to be convinced on the standards, you know, I don't, I don't want to do too much convincing my own to try to like make it happen, so I'd still be a no.
Fair enough, Members Zeransky?
I just have a question for the applicant, sorry I broke a record on this, but, so currently, he's asking for fifty-seven hundred, or he has fifty-seven hundred?
Asking for.
Asking for, and. Oh, this whole subdivision was built relatively around the same time, right? So is your house much larger than all the other houses?
No.
It just, again, I.
Would you just, would you mind coming up to the podium?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll remind you, you're still sworn in, so.
Yeah, the thirty-seven seventy-one looks bigger.
Yeah, the one directly across.
I just, I feel like a broken record, I just, the numbers, it just doesn't seem right, like something's missing. I don't know if it's the architect, or if it's the assessor, or the lot, it just, it doesn't make sense that all of these houses are over and, it's just confusing, I guess it'd be more comfortable, you know, deciding if we kind of knew with, you know, definitive that, you know.
What the actual sizes.
Yeah, right.
I kind of agree with you, the, and, you know, what the actual sizes are important because if the houses, if he's saying his house isn't that much bigger than any of the other ones, and his house is fifty-three hundred square feet, I mean, by the numbers, it is a lot bigger than the other ones, but if it's not in reality, then something, we're missing some information that should be pretty relevant in determining whether this is appropriate or not.
Right. And again, I do see a hardship being by the highway and being by, you know, kind of swampy land that you would need it, or at least desire it, but at the same time, we are, you know, as the chair mentioned, like, we're kind of bound to sort of execute the city council's vision, and it's sort of like sensitive to the FAR request, and it's just such a gross ask that it's, you know, in excess, that it's just, it's difficult, so I guess I'm. If I was to vote tonight, I probably would approve based on thinking that something's skewed with these numbers, and I believe there's a hardship that's met because of what you're backing up to, but I'm also, it's still, I'm not quite there, but I guess I would be leaning toward an approval if we were to, you know, be forced to do a vote today, so. But helps.
Member Trishansky?
I'm still the same, I would approve it.
Thank you. Member Yebon?
I, too, would still vote to approve, but I do hear what you're saying about the numbers being really wonky.
Thank you. All right, I haven't changed, and that was the most recent to opine, and I, my opinion still remains the same, I kind of agree with Members Zeransky, that it seems like something's off, but without knowing for sure that's, that something's off, it's hard to just kind of fly blind and say, well, we think there must be something off, and because there might be something off, we're going to give it to you, even though the information presented to us is in fact correct, we shouldn't be giving it to you, so I would, I'd vote against it if we were to vote right now.
Patrick, just a question? Would it help, I, I saw this on the package, and I should have brought a computer, I can't read what's on the screen, if you looked at every house in the area, and does it show what their FAR ratio is? I can't.
No, provides the lot area and then.
But not the FAR.
Gross floor, you're correct.
Because I think if you had, that might get some people more comfortable if you saw what each house's size is and their FAR ratio.
Well, Patrick has it, or hit the average, it's thirty-seven percent, which is.
But, you know, sometimes averages are misleading, I thought, put in context of the five or seven houses around it.
My concern would be like, at what point do you say no on an FAR, though, based off percentage, because I think this is testing, like, just forgetting that it makes sense, I feel like this would be testing the bounds of just that number, whatever it is, you know?
Yeah, no, I agree, if the FAR is supposedly there for a reason, and in order to exceed it, we have to have the standards met, it's, that's, we're kind of getting into kind of repeat mode. At this point, Mr. Kaplan, I'm not even sure how the board would vote a hundred percent. I'm gonna, I'm not going to read the tea leaves for you, I'm going to leave that up to you, so you do have the option at this point of asking us to call a vote on the matter, or you have an option of continuing it, it's up to you.
If, if the vote goes through, can I then also have a continuance if it?
No, if you, well, if the vote goes through and you are granted the variance, it's over. If it's, if it goes through and you're not granted the variance, it's also over, and you're, unless I'm mistaking things.
I will note that, so if you make a motion to approve, and if that fails, that just means the motion to approve has failed, then you would create a motion to, I didn't bring a document to deny the request, so I would then have to draft documentation, and then you would have to adopt the denial order.
Is there not a rule that if a variation is denied, that there's a certain time before he can reapply for the same variance? I think there is, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, it's just that that would also give the applicant time to possibly come back with new plans at that next meeting, because you would then need to adopt the denial order.
Right, say that again.
So if the motion to approve fails here, you then need to motion staff to draft denial orders, because that's not before you, I only have the drafted approval orders, then, so that would go to a next meeting, it would essentially work like a continuance, where the applicant would then have time to talk with his architect and possibly reformat plans, and they could propose new materials for you, so then at that next meeting, you could either approve of the denial order, or based off of what the applicant has brought before you again, could sway you to have a approval order.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, Patrick, I'm just questioning in the past, when we've, when we've denied a variance, the variance has been denied, and we, I don't recall specifically asking, because a denial order could be as simple as the variation is denied, you could draft that in, you know, literally thirty seconds, so I don't recall matters being continued to approve a denial order. Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't.
I do know that we still need to report a denial order, and that material's not in the packet, so it would need to be in the public packet in order for OMA, would be an OMA violation, in order to, you can, I can just provide that to you and sign it, it would kind of be a legal document that needs to be in the record. That's how Carl has told it to me.
Did you have something to add?
I was going to agree with you, Jamie, or Chair Bart, that in the past, it has seemed to be more of, if it's not granted, it is denied, and then, yes, there does need to be another motion drafted that says that, but, so this is a little bit different than.
Yeah, are you saying that, I'm sorry for interrupting, are you saying the pathway would then be for him to come back and before we actually approve the denial order, to try to convince us to not approve the denial order?
He could bring new materials if he wishes.
That kind of seems like a, an odd path to traverse, but.
Yeah, but I asked Carl. Yeah, but I asked Carl, and that's kind of how the process, he laid it out for me. I can, I will speak with Corporation Council to verify if that's correct, but that's how it's been told to me.
Yes, after eight years, my last meeting, I can learn some new tricks. Members Zeransky?
I just wanted to say, I just, I read, I read your letter again, and while I don't think that you specifically walk through every single standard to prove them out, it is a good letter, and it does help me get over the finish line, and I would support your variation. I don't know, you know, if that gets you the votes you need, but I would vote for you.
Thank you. And I honestly, I didn't realize I was going to be speaking, so I would have brushed up on what I had said, so I apologize for that, but thank you.
All right. If no one else from the board has anything to say, I will just ask you what your preference is at the present time.
I am, motion to, to vote, I guess.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this point.
Motion to vote? I'm sorry.
Well, it's got to be a motion to your...
I will note that if you do motion to approve, you do have to vote yes. Like, if you are the first, you have to be a yes.
Vice Chair Yavlon makes a motion to approve the motion as drafted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Yavlon to approve the variation as requested, and I assume that means to sign the variance approval order as written, and as seconded by Member Truszczyk, Truszczyk, can we get a roll call vote, please, Patrick?
Member Arnoff?
Aye.
Member Weisberg?
Nay.
Member Truszczyk?
Aye.
Member Zeransky?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yavlon?
Aye.
Chair Bay?
Nay.
Motion passes four to two.
Thank you. It's a close one.
I don't know what we're going to do.
I don't know either.
It's on the edge of my seat there, I have a close one.
Yeah, congratulations.
I think that's the first one I've ever had, I don't know how it's going to go.
Thank you. Okay. And item number six is a staff report, do we have a staff report?
No staff report.
No staff report. Okay. Item number seven is miscellaneous, and there's one item miscellaneous entitled outgoing member. Anyone have anything they want to say on that?
Vice Chair Yavlon would like to make a proclamation, whereas Jamie Bay has served with distinction as a member of the zoning board of appeals since January 2017, leading and participating in consideration of cases essential to the improvement of this community, its neighborhoods, and the quality of life therein, and whereas Jamie Bay was responsible for promoting and increasing community awareness of the need for sound residential and commercial planning, and the need to appropriately design public and private improvements in Highland Park during their tenure on the zoning board of appeals, and whereas in being the institutional memory for the zoning board and in serving with honor, their public service attests to their steadfast integrity, wisdom, and excellence of character. Be it therefore resolved that the member of the zoning board of appeals of Highland Park do hereby recognize Jamie Bay for their dedicated and untiring public service as a member of the board on behalf of the residents of the city, and it is further resolved that in expression of our respect and grateful appreciation to Jamie Bay's service, we hereby adopt this resolution as a permanent record thereof on the 20th day of November 2025 in Highland Park, Illinois. Thank you for your service.
Sounds like a nice guy, I'll have to meet him sometime. Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number eight.
I just want to say one thing, I just wanted to comment that I think Jamie has been a phenomenal board member, phenomenal leader, a great perspective on this board, and surely will be missed by, by myself, and I would imagine everybody else as well, so, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, I appreciate it, truly, thank you. Okay. And I will also say before calling for adjournment, that it has been an honor and a privilege to serve, I know it sounds corny, but it really has, I've, I've learned a lot, can't believe it's already been eight years, served with two great staff people, Patrick and Carol before, and, yeah, I'm, I'm relieved that I'll have Thursday nights to plan without worrying about anything anymore, but I'll also miss quite a bit, so.
You're not going to watch?
Not definitely.
You won't be watching?
I'll be in person. Yes, I'll be, I'll be the one, you are watching it live, so. I probably will watch, occasionally I'll watch some of the recordings just to say, hey, what's going on in the zoning board without me, so, you know, so, although I have every, I, I think, although it hasn't been official yet, but I have every confidence that my replacement will be quite up to the task, so I leave you in good hands.
It's been eight years, when you say like eight years, it's like a weird long time. It's a lot of years.
Go so far, yeah, go so far, so. All right, that's all I got, as my, as my kids like to say, that's all I got, yeah. With that, I'm, item number eight, adjourned, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we are adjourned.
So nothing, two weeks worth done?
So I don't...